Well, good afternoon, everyone. And then welcome to today's Stratford City Council meeting. It is our 4,625th meeting since incorporation of our community. We'll begin this afternoon's meetings recognizing regrets from councillors Burbach and Ingram, and with a moment of silent reflection, if we could all just take a moment. Thank you. Joining me in the council chamber is City Clerk Tatchana Defoe and our Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson. On the phone are Directors David St. Louis, Director of Community Services, Ed Delovick, Director of Infrastructure and Development Services, Kim McElroy, the Director of Social Services, John Parity, our Fire Chief, Janice Baroness, Acting Director of Corporate Services, Alison Jordan, Events Coordinator, Michelle Pinto, Project Engineer, and Alex Burgess, Manager of Ontario Works. At this time, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three is adoption of the minutes from the August 10, 2020 council meeting, and they have been circulated. Councillor Henderson will move, and Councillor Vazalakos will second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that is carried. Item four is adoption of the addendum to today's agenda, and it is to deal with item 4.1 of the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting. Councillor Bunting and Councillor Gaffney. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? That's carried. Item five is a report of the Committee of the Hole in Camera session at the August 24 session held earlier this afternoon. There were two matters. One was an advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. The second one was personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees. And at the meeting, direction was provided on both of those items. Item six are hearings of deputations and presentations. And item 6.1 is recognition of certified road supervisor certification. And I believe, Mr. Delovick, you're on the phone with us. Mr. Ryan joins us as well.
Yes, your worship. I am here, and so is Adam Ryan.
For members of council, and of course, people watching this online, it's our privilege to congratulate Adam Ryan. He's our manager of Public Works. And Ryan has been working on attaining his Certified Road Supervisor Certification from the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors. And Ryan has completed, Mr. Ryan has completed that designation. So, Adam, on behalf of the city, we just want to congratulate you, and of course, look forward to continuing to work with you and wish you all the best. And at this time, Adam, do you have anything you'd like to add, or Mr. Delovick, for that matter, as your supervisor?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I guess I'd start by saying thanks to, obviously, Mr. Matheson, city council members, our CLT group, for the opportunity to grow professionally through education and networking opportunities. And then, obviously, thanks to my director, Ed Delovick, for his forward thinking. You know, he's enabled not only myself, but our department to move forward with a lot of fresh ideas and alternative methods in regards to infrastructure management and maintenance. So, again, just thank you to you all.
Thank you.
Yes, your worship. Ed, here, I just want to, again, I want to offer my congratulations to Adam on achieving the certificate. And as he mentioned, I think it's very important that we have continued education here at the city, and it's something that's been supported. And I think, as Adam has mentioned also, the networking opportunities. It's a great way to meet other managers throughout the province. And you establish a list of contacts when you come up with issues. And then you reach out to them to see if they've done something similar, where they can provide you with some solutions quickly for you to get the work done here, here in the city of Stratford. So, once again, congratulations to Adam, and to all the staff that are continuing to improve on on their abilities and the services that they offer the people of Stratford.
Thank you, Ed. Councillor Henderson.
I just want to say congratulations, and we don't do handshakes anymore, so here's a virtual elbows tap from all of us.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations, Adam, and all the best. Item seven are orders of the day, and item 7.1 is a resolution for Dufferin Park accessible on-street parallel parking. And then staff recommendation is that traffic parking bylaw 159-208 be amended by adding as follows: Schedule 21 designated parking spaces for persons with disabilities, that the pavement immediately adjacent to the curb on the west side of Oak Street measured from a point 33 meters south to the south curb of Dufferin Street to a point 0.54 meters southerly therefrom. Councillor Henderson will move. Councillor Vazalakos will second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.2 is a resolution with regard to Erie Street accessible on-street parallel parking, and that the traffic in bylaw 159-208 be amended as follows. And it is the pavement immediately adjacent to the curb on the west side of Erie Street measured from a point 121 meters south of the south curb of Ontario Street to a point 7.4 meters southerly therefrom. Councillor Henderson will move that. Councillor Gaffney will second. Discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.3 is correspondence from residents of Fraser Drive and Foreman Avenue. And there is information there that's attached, and of course, a motion is that the correspondence from Fraser Ave and Foreman Ave residents expressing concerns about bike paths, safety, and lack of parking referred to staff for a report on the various issues. Councillor Gaffney, Councillor Vazalakos. Discussion. Councillor Vazalakos.
Thank you. I am going to express some concerns about, so I really do not want to see us to roll back any added cycling infrastructure. So I realize there'll be a report coming back, but one of the things that I'm, we repeatedly do, is we often will come up against resistance for increasing our active transportation system, and then end up either not adding cycling infrastructure or rolling it back. And I have, I live up in that area, and I drive up there and walk up there quite often, and those bike paths are being well-used. They're being well-used by young people, by families. And, and it really now, as we want to use more active transportation to get kids to the high school, I think it's going to be really important, really important that we maintain those bike paths. I have seen in Waterloo, where some of the bike paths, they've put in curb, and then some of the little flexible bollards that actually do give an added layer of protection to the bike path. So if speed enforcement is a problem in that area, I could see adding something like that. I'm also a little concerned about making decisions around infrastructure and expanding our cycling infrastructure, and then having concerns about safety because of what is essentially enforcement issues, enforcement around parking, which shouldn't be happening in bike lanes, and also enforcement because of speed. So I know that this will come back to us with the staff report, but I just want to sort of reiterate my concern about any suggestion of removing those bike lanes, because they're really an important part of a connected cycling network in the city.
Thank you, Councillor Vazalakos. Councillor Henderson, I saw your hand. Next.
I just wanted to say, too, I know it's kind of confusing for residents when they maybe haven't had, you know, the park, the bike lanes on their street. But that's because we have a huge master plan, and then, you know, as money's coming available and we're able to move forward, it's happening. And Fraser and Foreman, they probably don't realize, they're living on collector streets. That's why their roads are wider. And I know in some of the letters, they mentioned other streets like Brown and that. Well, those are local roads, so they're different than collector roads. And most local roads are quiet enough that the bicycles can ride on them safely. But it's our collector and our tier roads that we really have to worry about. And I know it'll be upsetting, because they've been there probably, what, five or six years now? But, you know, we need to get our people around the city safely, and they need to have the bike lanes. So I look forward to hearing the report.
Yes, Councillor Vazalakos.
Sorry, something just occurred to me while we're waiting for a report to come back. If there are issues of speeding and traffic in that area with the schools opening in a couple of weeks and that report not coming back to us, could we just also ask that staff look at possibly some of the automated speed signs and some of those things that we have available to us to try to reduce speeds in that area? And maybe look at some additional enforcement as the high schools come back in? I just realized that that report will come back after school starts, and we may run into some issues before that.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, is noted. Seeing no other hands, it's been moved by Councillor Gaffney, seconded by Councillor Vazalakos. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.4 is a resignation from the Committee of Adjustment, and it's that the resignation of George Brown from the Committee of Adjustment be accepted. Councillor Clifford and Councillor Beatty moving seconding. I appreciate former councillor Brown's time and efforts on the Committee of Adjustment. I will send an appropriate thank you on behalf of the corporation. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? That's carried. Item 7.5 is a resolution, School Zones and Community Safety Zones. The recommendation is that the information in the report titled "School Zones and Community Safety Zones" be received and filed. Councillor Bunting, seconded by Councillor Gaffney. Discussion. Councillor Vazalakos.
I just wanted to bring up, and I'd already contacted staff about this. There was an error made in the staff report in saying that the high schools would be going to 50% occupancy. There were only, there were some school boards in the province that went to a two-day, like 50%, but ours haven't. And so one of the concerns that I have is, I don't have as much concern around the public schools, where we have done some work around travel safety. We have crossing guards that can flag issues to the police and maybe increase some enforcement if they see some problems. Again, I go back to what we are, what we saw, and it was in the report, was a lot of it is behavior. Is, it's not about infrastructure. It's not about, you know, the, like, the road structure or what we have available. A lot of it has to do with behavior and enforcement issues. So I do have a concern. You know, we're filing this report, but if the high schools are at full capacity, I'm wondering whether, because we don't have crossing guards around the high schools, maybe there could be, maybe to flag it for a little extra enforcement in the first couple of weeks, especially if there could be some kids that are driving in and not taking the bus. And if we know that the schools are at full capacity, we may run into some issues.
Thank you. It's noted. Ms. Thompson has made that note. All right, it's been moved by Councillor Bunting, seconded by Councillor Gaffney. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.6 is a resolution, Stratford Municipal Airport reopening for normal business. And the staff recommendation is that council approve the Stratford Municipal Airport to reopen for normal business, follow all city COVID safety precautions, and continue to monitor the Huron Perth Public Health website for updates. Councillor Beatty moving, seconded by Councillor Vazalakos. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. 7.7 is a resolution, Romeo Street, North Water Main lining, tender award for contract T 2020-32. And the staff recommendation that council approve the award of Romeo Street, North Water Main lining contract to Fair Powell Construction Limited at a total price of $252,044.74, including HST, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the contract. Councillor Vazalakos moving, seconder. Councillor Gaffney, discussion. Councillor Ritzman, then Councillor Clifford.
Thank you, your worship. Just, and perhaps Mr. Delovick, Director, could identify, there was a huge discrepancy between the two quotes. Any reason why?
Yeah, through your worship, there's not a lot of companies that do this. And I think, you know, they, and then you'll see that sometimes when they're busy. Some of them will put in a high price on the, on the chance that their competitors are, will have a high price as well, or, and then, you know, and try to, and try to get a project out of an inflated rate. However, you know, we think the price that we got is in line with what we had from a way of estimating and what's gone on in other projects in Ontario.
Thank you. Councillor Clifford.
I had the exact same question. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing further. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.8 is a resolution, extension of lease for farmland on a lone avenue. And the staff recommendation is that an extension agreement with Alex Gibson of Montreux Farms for the continued lease of 31 and a half acres of farmland east of a lone avenue to the rear of the cemetery for a period of three years be approved, and the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. Councillor Ritzma moving. Councillor Clifford seconding. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.9 is appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, Z 05-19 by law 96 2020. That the city has received a notice of appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal for 265 St. David Street by Larson Properties Partnership Corp., and it's for the information of council. Item 7.10 is a resolution for Housing Resource Centre Agreement with Salvation Army Stratford, and that the mayor and clerk or their respective designates be authorized to execute an agreement with the governing council of Salvation Army of Canada on behalf of Salvation Army Stratford to deliver the Housing Resource Centre and Voluntary Trusteeship Program effective October 1, 2020. Councillor Henderson moving. Councillor Bunting seconding. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.11 is resolution, Heritage Stratford Recommendation, intend to designate 265 St. David Street under Part IV, Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act. And the staff recommendation is that staff are in support of Heritage Stratford August 18, 2020 resolution as follows: To designate 265 St. David Street as it has been demonstrated that the requirements for designation under Part IV, Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act has been satisfied. That city council issue a notice of intent to designate 265 St. David under Part IV, Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act specifically: A, the two-story rectangular residence with hip roof, pyramid roof, belvedere with three windows and two-story wing with gable roof; B, symmetrical front facade organization with central entrance, segmental arched window openings and second-story opening containing a pair of single entrance doors beneath round arch transoms above the front entrance; C, east and west elevations with segmental arched window openings in a symmetrical configuration; D, central front entrance in an arched opening with stained glass side lights and transom; E, paired round arch openings on second story above the front entrance; F, red and buff Italianate brickwork includes goings, window surrounds, wazars, cartouches, below first-floor windows, decorative band between stories and below roof; and G, large open lot surrounding the dwelling, and that, subject to designation, a commemorative plaque be installed on the subject lands. Councillor Gaffney moving. Councillor Henderson seconding. Discussion. Councillor Henderson, then Councillor Clifford.
I have a question. How, under G, large open lots surrounding the dwelling, what is heritage about a lot? I've got to understand that part about designating the, what, the grass and stuff?
Mr. Delovick, and I see Councillor Gaffney has his hand up as well.
Your worship, I believe Rachel Boss is on the line, so I will ask her to respond.
Ms. Bossy is the staff planner, so I'll turn it over to her to provide information. Ms. Bossy?
So through your worship, when they went through the LPAT hearing, this was the list that was proposed to be designated after work with the property owner and the solicitor. So it's basically describing the lands after the severance is complete, as it's believed that the size of the lot after the severances are complete is one of the reasons why the lot is special within the area.
Thank you. Councillor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to ask the clarification. After its heritage, after it's been designated, what changes can happen on the outside? Like on the outside, like as far as doors and windows and stuff, can any changes happen after it's a heritage building?
So through your worship, the applicant, once it's designated under the act, any changes to the exterior building that have the potential to alter any of the designated characteristics as listed A through G, they would be required to get a heritage alteration permit, and that may be heard by council, but for sure would be heard by the Heritage Stratford Designation Subcommittee, and staff would have the opportunity to review any of the proposed changes to the exterior of the building that could impact the designated features.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor Henderson.
Yes, I was just curious. I believe, and I can't remember if it was Ms. Baker that brought this forward, that there's plans to put, I think, an entrance on the east side of the building. So will that be affected? Would they have to go through a separate thing? Or is that already known, so it's part of this?
So through your worship, if they don't already have approval for it, once it's designated, any exterior changes to the building will be required to go through the heritage alteration permit process. I am not familiar if they have a building permit for that, but if they do not, again, yeah, they'll have to go through the heritage alteration permit process.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.12 is a resolution, Consumption of Liquor in Alfresco Dining Locations 2020 Extension. And the staff recommend that the consumption of liquor with food in Alfresco locations, specifically Market Square and Tom Patterson Island Pilot Program be extended till October 31, 2020. Councillor Beatty and Councillor Vazalakos. Discussion. Councillor Vazalakos.
I just had a quick question about enforcement. Like, it says that the police will continue, I mean, with the Parks Patrol program ending soon, I see in the report that the police said they would do, they would take over any enforcement that occurs. But that isn't any additional work that they do over and above their regular patrols of the park system, is it? And if there is a cost associated with that, who picks that up?
So the intent, I believe, in speaking with Chief Skinner, is that general patrol will come through the downtown, park the car, walk through the area, ensure compliance in either spot, and then continue on.
So if that's added costs to, if that's over and above what the city, the city, what the Stratford Police Service usually does, if there's a cost associated with that, who picks that up, or there isn't?
No. We're just going to add it to the general, general patrol, similar to what they do when they don't have Parks Patrol. They still go through the parks area. They drive through the cemetery to monitor behavior, and they will do the same here. It will require more foot patrol, leaving the car to ensure compliance either on the island or in Market Square, but they feel they can incorporate that in their, in their work schedule.
Okay, because as I said, we go back to the needing a little bit of extra enforcement around the schools coming up. So at least they're different times of day.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Item 7.13 is Lights on Stratford Initiative 2020-21. And the staff recommendation that the request to operate Lights on Stratford City Hall, Market Square, in the park system be approved to run from October 2020 till October, or sorry, April 2021, subject to the necessary approvals and permits being obtained, that the following requests for Lights on Stratford be approved, subject to necessary approvals and permits. Mount light art exhibits in the downtown core with a focus on Market Square and in the park system. Install projectors for lighting City Hall. Install Wi-Fi security cameras at key installation areas. Install Light Festival Wayfinding signage. Receive assistance with any necessary permitting, and receive general logistical support for hydro-snow removal and garbage receptacles. And that the task force prepares a follow-up report outlining the final program for council approval. Mover, Councillor Gaffney. Seconder, Councillor Bunting. Discussion. Councillor Henderson, Councillor Bunting.
I just think it's, they came to the Parks Board with their presentation. It's very exciting. And I know Civic Beautification Environmental Awareness Committee have tried for many years to beautify Tom Patterson along the River Drive, and we know how expensive it is. And so we're very excited at seeing this happen. And, and I'm sure it's going to be a great success. And maybe next year, we can get commercial businesses involved more, and they can start decorating the outside of their buildings too again, which they used to do years ago, and especially now that we have LED lights, it doesn't really cost too much. And it's just an exciting idea of how to make our city look beautiful in the winter.
Councillor Bunting.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I've been a board member of Stratford Tourism for six years. And one of the concerns that has been addressed each and every year is the shoulder seasons. And this is an ideal project to address the issues of getting people, more reasons for people to come to Stratford to see this event. I think it's wonderful, and I do believe that it will not only work for this coming year in this very difficult time with COVID, but it'll also be a huge plus moving forward for future years. That's just a comment.
Sure. Thank you. Councillor Vazalakos.
So is this something that's specific for a period of time? So like they install, let's say, over the winter season for three months, and then it gets taken down? And then gets, is it something that then gets repeated the same? Or we can choose to do it again? Like, is it a one-off now? Or do we purchase things that then have to be then stored and taken, and taken back in and out?
The intent is always to purchase as much as possible using the grants that we've been provided. And the hope is if this is successful, it could become a continued program. Anything further? Not all those in favor? Opposed, Fenni? And that's carried. Resolution 7.14 is review of measures to provide financial relief during COVID. And the staff recommendation is that following be resumed effective Monday, August 31, 2020. That penalty and interest charges and progressive collection activities related to property tax installment due dates, all penalties, interest, late payment charges, and other fees related to water and sewer billing and all progressive collection activities, collection of trans affairs and front door boarding and water meter disconnections be resumed. Mover, Councillor Seven, and, oh, sorry. All right, mover is Councillor Beatty and Councillor Clifford. Councillor Seven, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to this. I would prefer to see this happen in, if we waited a little bit longer. I'm not sure this is the best time. I feel like, similar to parking fees, I don't feel there's been enough of a change of circumstance since April to justify my very active business as usual, at least not yet. But that's my feeling on it. And I just think there are a lot of families and households that are still really struggling from, from all the changes and everything that's happened. And, and, you know, that's just my thoughts on that. So I'll, I'll speak against the motion.
Councillor Clifford.
I support the motion on floor, but I have a question on transit. Like, how will it, as far as protection, when they come in the front door and fees and stuff? So how will it change on transit after we institute the pay?
Mr. Mosley or Mr. St. Louis, whichever one's on the line?
Yes, it's Mr. Mosley. Through you, your worship. We've spent the last several weeks actually putting in quite a bit of safety measures as far as going back to front door. We've installed bio-barriers, which is just a Lexan Plexiglas that swings on a piano hinge and stays fastened by magnets. Totally barrier protection as far as staff goes and for the public as well. We are all set if council wishes to go back to front door boarding, as they've all been installed on all the line buses. We are just still working on two school specials, but we'll be all set to go if council wishes to go back to front door boarding.
Councillor Gaffney, Councillor Vazalakos.
Thank you, your worship, through you, and this is to Mr. Mosley also. This barrier that's between the driver and the passengers, it's able to become a quick exit in case of emergency. It's not, it's not hasp closed or anything. It's a pretty quick exit of the.
Through you, worship, yes, they are only attached or secured by two 16 and a half pound magnets. So it's easy enough just to open it and close it just by the weight of just opening a normal door. So it's not. So it's not combined, and you can exit and enter quite easily.
Thank you.
Counselor Vazalacos?
I had a question about, you know, I'm generally in favor of moving towards, you know, going back to normal sort of collection services and being able to then, you know, plan city services. But I'm just wondering, there may be some people that find themselves in a position where they do need some alternative payment system where that they're still struggling, but they can still contact the city. I think we've done it in the past where there is a process where they, we can, we can look at case by case basis, case, on a case by case basis and, and come up with some, you know, sort of that.
One, I will just say that we still have the United Way Fund available to residents. And Ms. McElroy, if you could maybe speak about some of the money that's available through social services for those in need?
Yes, through your worship, we do still have the, the best passes for those that required it on an income needs testing. So they are, that program is still available and continue, will continue to be available.
So I'm just wondering that in, if we could just maybe reiterate some of those programs that are out there right now? So if we are moving to, to taking, you know, resuming some of our activities, maybe we can make a little bit of an effort to get some of those other contacts shared again in case people need them.
Yes, we can, we can communicate that through the website if required, yes.
Set suffice Counselor Vazalacos for your answer. Okay. All right, if there's no other hands, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed and the motion carries. Thank you. Item eight is business for which previous notice has been given and there's none scheduled. Item nine is report of the standing committee. And report nine one is from the Planning and Heritage Committee. It's with regard to zone change application Z01-20677 Erie Street. And that the zone change application to amend the zoning on the west portion of 677 Erie Street, located on the southwest corner of Erie and Lorne Avenue East from a general industrial special provision I2-32 to a general industrial special provision holding I2-34-H zone to permit in addition to the existing uses, an eat-in restaurant with a maximum gross floor area of 223 square meters. To state that the required parking spaces for an eat-in restaurant is one per four person seating capacity. To apply a parking rate of one space for the automatic drive-through car wash. To require a minimum of 12 stacking spaces and a stacking lane for a drive-through. And to apply a holding provision to prohibit a restaurant drive-through until a traffic impact study has been submitted and approved to the satisfaction of the city. Be approved for the following reasons: Public interest was considered. Item two, the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement and official plan. Three, the request will facilitate the development that is appropriate for the lands and is compatible with surrounding lands and is considered to be sound land use planning. And four, the request will encourage efficient use of land and infrastructure. Counselor Ritzma will move the adoption of that report. Seconder, Counselor Clifford. Discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Item 10 is notice of intent, and there is none scheduled. Item 11 is reading of the bylaws, and they can be taken collectively of bylaws 11, 1 through 4 and 11, 6. And the bylaws are as follow, are as follows. A zoning bylaw amendment Z01-20 for the west portion of 677 Erie Street. 11, 2 is the award of tender for Romeo Street North Water Main Linings Project. 11, 3 is traffic and bylaw, parking bylaw amendment. 11, 4 is the purchase of service agreement with the Salvation Army. And bylaw 11, 6 is to appoint Christopher Bantock as deputy clerk for the corporation, the city of Stratford, effective September 8. And as I said, they can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Counselor Vazalacos moving and seconded. Counselor Bunting, that be taken collectively. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. So we'll go to first and second reading. Counselor Henderson and Counselor BD will move bylaws 11, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and bylaw 11, 6 be read a first and second time. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Ritzma, that bylaws 11, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item 12 is consent agenda. Is there any matters on the consent agenda individuals like to bring forward at this time? If not, we will move to item 13, which is new business. Counselor Ritzma?
Thank you, your worship. I want to extend my congratulations to the manager of Public Works, Adam Ryan, and his colleague Nick Sheldon, and to Mr. Deluick for another amazing, well-organized hazardous waste collection. I believe there were 479 visitors and all that, all those items did not go to our landfill. So certainly from the farmer's market perspective, a lot of happy vendors, a lot of happy market goers. And so a great day overall. So a huge congratulations to all involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further? If not, we could take a motion to adjourn, to reconvene in standing committee for planning and heritage. Moved by Counselor Vazalacos and seconded by Counselor Bunting. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Counselor Ritzma, I'll turn over the meeting for you to chair from here.
Thank you, your worship. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'd like to call to order the Planning and Heritage Committee open session. And there are regrets from Counselor Burbak and Counselor Ingram. Item two, any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Seeing none. Item three, delegations are none scheduled. Item four, report of the Director Infrastructure and Development Services. 4.1, planning report, zone change application Z11-19 and with respect to address 173 Huron Street, PLA 20-008. And I believe our staff planner, Mr. Bannon, are you on the line to give a staff report?
Yes, I am available.
Could you go ahead? Thank you.
Thank you. Zone change application Z11-19 was submitted by Ryan St. Pierre and Krista Hurley St. Pierre. They have applied to change the zoning of the property from mixed-use residential zone to a mixed-use residential zone with an additional use being permitted, being a triplex dwelling. Subject lands are located on the south side of Huron Street between John Street North and St. Vincent Street North. Just as a little background history on the property, the lands were part of a previous zone change application in 2016. The owner had requested at the time to rezon the lands to a residential third density zone to allow triplex or quadruplex dwelling. The Planning and Heritage Committee at the time recommended refusal of the application. Council referred the zone change application back to Planning and Heritage Committee, and eventually the owner withdrew the application in February of 2017. A building permit has been issued for duplex dwelling, and that was issued in January of 2018. The property is designated as residential area and mixed use. There is sufficient lot area and municipal infrastructure to allow for an additional dwelling unit on the lands. Applicant has submitted a concept plan that shows how parking can be accommodated on the property without impacting the character of the area. Official plan does not define heritage qualities in the mixed-use area. While the existing building and property contains many of the same characteristics as other buildings in the area, the most noticeable difference is the height of the front facade from grade to the roof line. It's one half a story higher than other buildings in the neighborhood. The building also conforms to the MUR zoning. In our opinion, it would be considered inappropriate to not allow intensification in a building that was constructed in conformity with existing zoning, solely on the basis that the front facade is a half a story higher than other buildings along that section of the street. The proposed development represents a slight increase in density on the lands and with minimal changes to the exterior of the building. Development is of a similar height, massing and scale as permitted as a right along that block face. For agency comments, Building Services have noted that a building permit will be required for any renovations or changes to the existing building. Engineering Services, Festival Hydro and Upper Thames River Conservation Authority do not have any objections to the zone change. It has been circulated to the public, the concerns that have been raised, there are several of them that have come back. The building mass and scale was one concern. In our opinion, the building mass and setbacks are not proposed to be changed through zoning application. And the only change to the exterior of the building is to add one additional parking space. Other properties and along this block face are permitted to construct a new building or addition to a similar height, mass, and scale as what's already existing on the subject lands. The rezoning application to allow a triplex will not significantly increase the amount of traffic along Huron Street. The submitted concept plan demonstrates how vehicles can maneuver properly on the land and exit, entering and exit from Huron Street in a safe manner. They also show an amenity area directly outside of the rear entrance, and two of the units have large covered porches. The design meets the zoning by law requirements for minimum landscape open space and is below the maximum lot coverage. Property is also within a walking distance of 450 meters approximately to the lion's pool, 250 meters to the TJ Dolan Drive and the parkland that connects to that TJ Dolan natural area. The proposed triplex also maintains the residential character of the neighborhood. In our, in our opinion, it would not just detract from the intent of the mixed-use designation or the zone. Further concern was the impacts on property values. Studies have shown that in the candidate in the United States across a variety of neighborhoods, that the studies did not find any impact on property values for affordable housing and high-density developments. Existing building conforms to the MUR zone regulations and is a similar, regulations are in fact on both sides of Huron Street. Parking is located at the rear of the property, and the four parking spaces exceed the requirements in the zoning by law for the proposed use. Parking area is also screened from adjacent neighbors to the west and the south by an existing fence. After reviewing the proposal against the provincial policy statement, the policies of the official plan and considering input from the public, staff are recommending approval of the zone change application. The zoning by law amendment is consistent with the provincial policy statement. It's in keeping with official plan provisions and intent of the zoning by law and is considered to be consistent with the city's strategic priorities and represents good plannings. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Any questions from council? Counselor Gaffney and then Counselor Vazalacos?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bannon, you said there was 250 meters to the natural area at TJ Dolan, TJ Dolan? Or the, I'm not quite sure where you said there was a playground.
Through the chair. I didn't identify the playgrounds. They are identified in the report. You are looking at approximately a kilometer away from the nearest public playground.
That's quite a long way. Thank you.
Counselor Vazalacos?
I seem to have read in one of the letters from one of the residents was that there is work that needs to be completed, perhaps in, on onsite that is impacting the, the neighbors. Is there any way, like, is, do we have any information on whether there's additional work that needs to be completed?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of the additional work that needs to be completed beyond that. If they do receive approval for a triplex dwelling, they will need to do interior alterations, and they'll need the building permits to be completed for the work that's being proposed.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you.
So moving down the agenda, there are a couple motions here before we get to the staff recommendation. The first motion is that the correspondence from Ms. Kirkham, Mr. Pierce, John Dungey, and Sarah Neville regarding zone change application Z11-19 for 173 Huron Street be received. Is there a mover for that? Counselor Henderson will move, a seconder, Counselor BD. Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And the second, the second motion that follows, and there's been a slight amendment to this. There is a motion in front of you to hear Ms. Kirkham and Mr. St. Pierre regarding zone change application Z11-19. A mover for that? Moved by Counselor Vazalacos, seconded by Counselor Gaffney. All in favor? And that's unanimous. So Ms. Kirkham, are you there on the line?
Hello?
Yeah, so you're available on the line there?
Yes.
Oh, there you go. I see you now. You have the floor?
Thank you very much. I would like to start off by saying thank you for your time and consideration on this matter regarding the zone change for 173 Huron Street. That being said, you are our last chance to have someone with say stand behind this neighborhood and show the same concerns we have. I'm left here to speak for my community because in these times of COVID, they don't feel comfortable attending or unavailable to attend at this time. And we're really not sure why at this time, but this agenda is a priority. And I'm going to get personal with this last attempt. It has been almost, it's almost at the four-year mark that we've been trying to fight a zone change for this property. And I can't help but still hear the words from NA Engineering at the end of the meeting in 2016. Well, we can just come back and build the same thing, but call it a duplex. And that's exactly what this new owner has done, built a triplex while being permitted for a duplex. We full-heartedly feel this has been the plan from inception. From our own experience, this builder has been hostile, a master liar and manipulator, and knows the ins and outs of getting around bylaws to achieve what he wants at the end, and quite often at the expense of those surrounding his properties. We have personally, on many occasions, been verbally attacked by this builder and his employees. This includes the intimidation of minor children and business owners surrounding his build. We have received threatening emails and texts and intentional damage done to our property on a couple occasions as well. And I have video and pictures documenting all the damage to our property. We are still dealing with daily damage because this builder has not properly finished the grading between the properties. And after three years, we are still unable to properly fix the damage because of this. How is this being sympathetic to the neighbors? How is three years an acceptable amount of time not to have this issue fixed? If you look on page three, it says, "The zone change will provide for a development that is appropriate for the land. If a triplex or a quadruplex wasn't appropriate before, why should it be so now? Just because he's already built the building? And as it is, it's already crowded in the parking lot with the families and the vehicles that are currently there, as well as a new huge oversized shed." Also, on page three, it says, "The public was consulted during the zone change circulation and comments that have been received in writing or at the public meetings have been reviewed, considered, and analyzed within the planning report. Honestly, after reading the planning report, we don't feel at all any of our comments or concerns were really considered by staff. I guess it's easy to ignore when it doesn't affect you personally, or you don't return emails regarding this build, or come to the actual property to look at it in person as invited to do so. Despite the couple who actually did it at the start, this has also been a huge letdown to the neighbors. But believe me when I say, this has been affecting and is affecting the neighbors who actually reside here. MUR zoning as it is does not include a triplex. So why wasn't this builder required to apply for the residential third density R3 zone allowing for a triplex? The last builder was not approved under that zone change proposal. So how is it possible or fair for this application now to be approved? And under the MUR zoning, giving special permission sends the wrong message. Another area of concern has been the property line. So we would appreciate answers to the following. If you look on page six, concept plan for 173 Huron Street, you'll see the frontage watch measurements are 12.680 meters. But then if you look at page seven, the frontage measurements are 12.8. That's a difference of just over a foot. We have witnessed the property stakes being removed and replaced by this builder and employees at their own discretion. at their own discretion and not at the assistance of the surveyor who want to correct. What's the correct measurement? We don't trust his, we don't trust his word on this matter and really believe this discrepancy should be seriously looked into. What his lot size is according to Stratford Planning Department and not what he submitted in form. Because again, the concept plans are misleading and false. Building services have stated that any renovation changes to the existing building will require a building permit to be applied for. But if you look back at the last council meeting on Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty, a question from council, page twenty-one, twenty-two asked this builder, what changes would be required to convert the building to a triplex? To which the builder replied, it would take a door. So the ground unit is already complete with the exception of a fire door. How is this possible if permits are required and no approval has been issued in regards to allowing a triplex? Another example of something being off. Also looking at the concept plans on page six, there seem to be many issues or inconsistencies. Could you please find the answers to the following? Did the original plan submitted for approval in November two thousand and seventeen include three or four parking spots? If only three, how was approval for a fourth spot granted? With four spots back there now already it's eating into the green space that's not there. We feel there are some safety issues on their property and feel the risk will increase with more vehicles and families. In the lot, there are no barriers preventing the cars from coming through our fence and potentially hurting my family or friends. There is no brass or grating in the backside yards. And looking at the maximum lot coverage, he is well outside the allotted space. How is this possible? He's feet, five feet from the property line and ours is just barely over three from the property line. We believe there's been an error in measurement and we have lost a foot of our property because of this. Having this examined would be beneficial for all parties. The air conditioning unit also sits elevated and just over two feet away, less than a meter from our wood fence without any kind of barricade or enclosure. We believe this is another safety issue for these units are combustible and post-fire hazards to our home. The noise in these units is loud and makes enjoyment of the backyard next to impossible. And if approved, I'm sure a third unit will be installed, making it even louder. Another safety concern for us is the lack of backfill between our property and theirs. So because of this, every time it rains, we get a mini river between the homes. This therefore causing our sidewalk steps and fence to slope and drop and pull away from our foundation. This plan also shows astute two stories dwelling, yet the measurements again show two different measurements and confirm it to be a two and a half story. But in reality, it's a three story building. This is all very confusing for us when these measurements are extremely important but are consistently wrong or are all over the place. Which are true to the space as it sits now. We have had to alter our home in response to this build because of the height of the triplex. We had to install blinds in our skylight resort to a semi-transparent sticker to allow some light but still retain privacy. We also had to install mirror tint on three of our side windows for the same reason because of the stature and window placement of this triplex and still allow some light. This doesn't feel very sympathetic to the neighbors. In conclusion, I hope at least some of what I have said and asked questions about and the comments and questions my fellow neighbors have committed also make you wonder and question the papers and their contents that sit in front of you and that you want the answers as much as we do. Let's not forget this concept has already been turned down by the Planning and Heritage Committee requested by a different developer in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen as a triplex. Please do not approve this zone change request and set precedent or at the very least defer until a later date that such questions and concerns can be answered correctly and truthfully and all concerned parties can attend and speak their deeds in a more appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kirkham. Any questions for Ms. Kirkham? Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I have a question regarding her presentation. I was going to ask our director of infrastructure as far as the grading between her property and the St. Pierre property. Has it been properly done or has it been approved by the city of Stratford, the existing grading that's there now?
It has not been properly done. Every time we've called the city to inquire about it, we've been told he has open permit.
I'm going to go to the director of infrastructure, Mr. Dooliver.
Yeah, through your worship, it has not been finalized. So we still need to follow up to get I think they identified some items that are still not done satisfactorily with respect to the city. And so that there's still work that needs to be done, especially since grading, because this has been an ongoing issue with this that needs correcting.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you once again for your presentation, Ms. Kirkham. At this, you're welcome. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. St Pierre. Are you available? I see you're online. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Oh, so I before I have a, I have a little presentation, but just I feel like I need to just, or probably should just specifically respond to some of the things that were said. So this will be in no particular order because we're trying to jot things down in real time and they're coming fairly quickly. So let's, let's start with this. Let's start with the side yard work that is incomplete at the moment. So this is easily addressed. So I, I actually, because of the hostility, I had personally emailed the building inspector and, and told him what the intent was, but to be perfectly honest, we didn't feel safe working at the side. And you'll notice that most of the other prop, most of the property is done, the landscaping is done, the sod and the front is done, everything has been completed. Other than a short little section, which is directly beside their main entrance that they, they go into all the time and usually accessing from our property. We would love to get this complete, but again, there's been so much hostility, we've, we've stayed away and I have not heard back from the building inspector that has dealt with our property. The main building permit has been closed out. The only open permit is for the basement. So we would love to get that cleared up. We just want to be assured before we enter the property that that there's, you know, it's going to be safe for us to do so and we won't be hassled or harassed in any sort of way. And we would love to complete this immediately. In terms of the shed that was purchased, we purchased that for our tenants so they could store some bikes and different items in. It conforms to the, to the hundred square foot rule. It's actually ninety-eight square feet. And it was, it was erected by Minninites and it's very well built. It's it's very aesthetically pleasing and we plan on painting it to match the house too, to make it look even better. And there was no permit required and it is exactly where it's supposed to be. So as for the stakes, this is, this is an issue that we brought up many times and will be part of my presentation as well. We incurred great expense, not because we chose to, to have NA come back multiple occasions, which has been documented and paid for at our expense as they kept continually being removed. So this, this is, this is, and I, I don't want to draw any conclusions and I'm not pointing fingers, but at the same time, we do suspect we know exactly who removed them. Having said that, we incurred the expense of getting our property lines shot many times. The, the coordinates and the measurements were provided to Ritz by any geomatics that has nothing to do with me. We've trusted fully along the way and none of our measurements have ever changed. They've always been the same way. So let me see if there's anything else before I get to. So after home window placement, what's that altered home window placement? Oh, yeah. So this was, this was actually something in, we'll touch on it briefly in the Beacon Herald article that we found along the way from the previous owner, which we were not privy to prior to purchasing this property, but one of the things we actually did find is that she was, Dijia was worried about having people looking into her windows, something specifically that we mentioned even before we saw this article to Robert Ritz was to ensure, and they spent many hours onsite mapping it out, making sure that the windows weren't lined up. And the window that she's talking about that apparently looks into her skylight is seven and a half feet off the floor. It's a fixed window in the laundry room with a wash tub in front of it. The only way to actually get to that window is if you use a six foot ladder and head towards the top of it. That's the only way you can actually get there, which people are not doing. So with that being said, I'm hoping that I hit those points, but I would like to. Our basement is not complete. I don't know if that was said. I didn't push that card. Okay. So, okay. So first, we'd like to thank all the city council, building and planning for recommending that one seventy-three Huron Street. We approved to allow our duplex to be legally converted to a triplex via our zoning application. As time is limited, I only intend on addressing a few major concerns we have with some of the notes that have come forward. It's important to state for the record that we had no provided information nor history of this land prior to purchasing it. The purchase of the land happened fairly quickly within the same afternoon it was listed. And it was, it wasn't until we were searching for the postcode via Google one day that a headline popped up from the Beacon Herald boasting, "Developing called Monstrosity." This article was printed on July twenty-sixth of two thousand and sixteen. As we began to read the, read the article, several names appeared including statements advocating the zoning change request be denied. Stephen Pierce, John Kirkham, Stephanie Flood, for those who were named. All of those who have appeared in statements against, against us and our requests to rezone the lands of one seventy-three Huron Street. Some items that were mentioned by the above noted were again reiterated in this case, although our buildings are buildings and requests are much different than the previous owners. It was brought to our attention that our, that out of ninety-eight people our request to rezone was circulated to only five people requested to stand firmly against it. The same five people, to the best of our knowledge, that heavily advocated against the previous owner's application. At the first council meeting, there were only three residents in attendance and out of the three, only two spoke. Mathematically, it appears that only approximately five percent of those who received the notification of our application felt it was necessary to speak up against the development proposals or is in our case, the rezoning application we had submitted. We recently found a post that councillor Bonnie Henderson posted on a Stratford Light Forum in response to said subject land and offered up for debate. But another property on Huron Street was granted a rezoning to allow a triplex. I do believe the address is three twelve. The property in comparison is very similar lay of the land with exception to different exterior appointments. After reviewing the comments and this thread, many people seemed indifferent, stating that we are in great need for quality rental suites in our community and also offering the notion that it is on a very busy street in Stratford nonetheless. Although we've already stated on record that our intent was to make this our family home, I will again state this. We were a hundred percent transparent and honest with everyone along the way. Even going as far as to show Mr. Kirkham the plans before construction had even commenced. This was intended to be our family home and we were really excited. Everything changed when our home started to be framed. The Kirkhams became extremely volatile toward us, threatening us, swearing at myself and my employees and other subtrades. They continue to call the Ministry of Labor, the Fire Department, Building and Planning and so much more. They also installed a giant middle finger mural in their skylight facing our property, which we only caught as we were installing the laundry room window, which again is seven and a half feet up with no view directly to their home. We've had our property stakes removed many times, our internet cable cut and thrown onto our lot. We have also been threatened physically and as a result, the police have had to intend the property many times to resolve the ongoing harassment. In short, I beg to ask if anyone would continue to choose moving their young family into this home when it had been apparently volatile and continues to be. As previously stated, our tenants enjoy their many provided amenities and have chosen our property knowing the amenities and high end finishes that were offered. For example, we do have one family who chose our unit over other rental options. They chose to make one seventy-three Huron Street their home as they loved the location with the proximity to the lion's pool, central flats, Adlon Public School and their place of employment. This notion that we need to provide more amenity space is strictly, strictly a projection of few individuals and is not based on facts. It was mentioned to us that when the Kirkhams' home was being built, the bungalow immediately west of us much scrutiny was offered and there are no other bungalow back splits in this area. Dijia and John have advocated heavily against our home while maintaining that our home does not fit into the area. We followed all city requirements and our application for building permit required no amendments, special permissions, no variances. We went through great lengths and costs to make our home have a heritage character and a color scheme that was also sensitive to the neighboring homes. It's been stated that our area of Huron Street is mostly residential. However, this is simply untrue. Our area is heavily dense with commercial buildings, businesses and a medical center. There are many multi-unit residential buildings also, and we do not agree that ours specifically we can theme and of the mixed use residential designation. We are very proud of our home and have been blessed to have received so much positive feedback from neighbors and many other residents that have reached out to us. We have been told countless times that our home has set a standard of value for, for Huron Street and commended us. With this said, we again wish to thank city council, building and planning for endorsing the zoning change application to move forward. We also wish to thank all of the neighbors that have advocated for this change, seeing their true intentions and the value that we've created. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St Pierre. Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none? So moving, moving down, there is a staff recommendation and it, it indicates that the zoning change of one seventy-three Huron Street be changed from mixed use residential zone M U R to mixed use residential zone special. Be approved for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement. Two, the request is in conformity with the goals and objectives and policies of the official plan. Three, the zone change will provide for development that is appropriate for the lands. And four, the public was consulted during the zone change circulation and comments have been received in writing and or at public meeting have been reviewed, considered and analyzed within the planning report. A mover for that staff recommendation? That's moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Beatty. Thank you very much. Discussion. Counselor Basilakos and Counselor Seven.
This is where I wish Counselor Ingram is here because she could maybe help us out. I, in general, I'm not thrilled at the process, how all this happened, recognizing it's been very difficult for everyone involved. The only concern I have is if there are any outstanding open permits from the city and that have to do with drainage or anything around the property. So any current work that isn't finished. And I, again, because I wish Counselor Ingram is usually the one that helps us through some of this is is it possible to add a holding provision to this zone change application to ensure that some of that work is completed that has, I'm thinking more about the drainage so that we could, so that the city inspectors can, can we have some of those inspections finished? Completed, closed out before final approval of this one?
Ms., your worship, go ahead.
Holding provision in place subject to being completed to the satisfaction staff.
Are we getting an approval from the clerk? I mean, from the C A O?
She also suggested Mr. Bannon offer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you. Yes, there's that opportunity. If you wanted to pursue with putting a holding provision on the lands, that would ensure that the work is being completed for the outstanding grading issues. And then that holding provision wouldn't be lifted until that work was completed and a report was brought back to council to lift that holding provision.
So I don't know whether that would be considered a friendly amendment, but I would like that added to the motion that's on the floor if.
We can, we can add that to that, to the current emotion, subject to a holding provision. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I made the motion. I support that. I believe if there is if the grading hasn't been done and other things between the properties, it, so I support that holding motion and it can be part of the motion.
Any other, second or Counselor Beatty or, thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Counselor Seven. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So.
No, thank you. So, you know, there, this issue has been before us a few times and I feel like there are definitely, there are certainly many layers to the issue and I think for me, sort of going to the base of this is, I have trouble sitting with the precedent and the principle of this, this issue that's before us. I feel like it should be a bigger, should be a bigger factor that something similar had been applied for by a previous owner of the property and, and was, was turned down to have a triplex there. For me, that, that weighs sort of on top of anything else. And so I just don't think, I'm worried about the precedent and I'm worried about, you know, I just, I'm opposed on principle and I'm, and I'm opposed because I don't think the precedent is an appropriate one. That, you know, the old saying, it's easier to ask forgiveness than permission. I don't think that should apply in cases like this. I think, I think we're walking a fine line and it's a slippery slope. And so I will be opposing the zone change.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. Any, Counselor Bunty?
Thank you. I don't know if Counselor Vasilakos covered this or not, but there was some mention about a dispute or uncertainty about property lines and so on and so forth setbacks. And I didn't know if that was included in her friendly amendment. I know there's grading and other bits and pieces that have been mentioned, but I certainly would like some verification that the property lines are where they are. And I don't know if that's the city's job or a surveyor or both, but could that be added if it isn't already included?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Bannon speak to that. Mr. Bannon?
Through the chair, the city does, does not typically get into boundary disputes between neighbors. We would normally ask for a survey from the property owner to make sure that property boundaries are, have been surveyed correctly. I can confirm in the report that it did mention for a lot frontage of 12.8 meters in the site's characteristics. I have looked that up online. They do show 12.68 on their plan. And looking at our GIS system, it, it does confirm that value of 12.68 meters across the frontage. So I believe that's just a typo or the six got omitted at some point in time while, when completing that report. So I can confirm that we're aware that the frontage or we believe the frontage should be 12.68 meters.
Any other questions or comments from council? Counselor Vasilakos?
So since the, this has to come back to council to make sure that the holding provision is lifted, could we get staff to just double check some of those lot lines and resubmit something to us just so that we have it on record?
If, if I could, the city does not, is not the arbiter of lot lines. It is under the Ontario Land Survey Act and we should not put ourselves into a piece of legislation that is outside of us. If there's a landowner that has a complaint with regard to lot lines and they don't believe the survey that's deposited at the registry office is correct, there is a process for them to, to correct that using the Land Surveyors Act.
Oh, yeah, I was aware of that. I just meant that there was a typo on one of the reports it would submit it to us, which is what Mr. Bannon said, that maybe we could just get staff to double check and make sure that that diagram comes back to us, the submitted, that possibly has a typo is corrected so that we can be sure. But yeah, no, I completely agree about the lot.
Any other comments or questions? So the staff recommendation has been moved, subject to a holding provision, moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Beatty. If I have no other comments or questions, I will call the question. All in favor? Just let me do a count here. And opposed? And that is, that is passed. Thank you. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Seven and Counselor Henderson will second it. All in favor? Thank you, and we are adjourned.
Reconvene council. And is there any declarations of peculiar interest that were stated at committee that need to be restated? Seeing none. The only item we have left is the confirmatory bylaw, bylaw 11.5 to be read a first and second time. Counselor Vasilakos and seconded by Counselor Bunting. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried. And third and final reading, moved by Counselor Henderson and seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried. And a motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings. Counselor Gaffney? Seconded by Counselor Vasilakos. Did you have, anybody have anything else they wanted to bring forward this time? All right, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that is carried. Thanks so much, everyone.